All right, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order. The date is November 4th, 2025, and the time is 6 o'clock PM. At this time, we will move to roll call. District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
District 2.
Present.
And District 4.
Present.
All right, and Madam Chair is here. At this time, our invocation tonight will be done by Pastor Terry Woodruff, Victory in Christ Ministries, Riverdale, Georgia. He will come up and do our invocation, and thereafter, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Will everyone please stand for our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
Good evening, Board, community. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, our Lord and our Savior, as we come to you in prayer, Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, asking that you will bless this meeting tonight, Father God. Let it yield fruit, Father God, to your kingdom. Father God, we pray over our Board of Commissioners, Father God, for we know that you place them over us, Father God, to lead us in guidance, Father God. And we ask, Father God, that you send your Spirit to bind every spirit that will try to bring dissension, Father God, for your word says how beautiful it is when brother and dwell together, Father God. So let our community, Father God, be a community of peace, Father God, and let what's shared here tonight, Father God, lead to that peace, Father God, that your people, Father God, may be blessed, Father God, in this county, which we love. We thank you for it, and we give you the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Woodruff. That was awesome. All right, next, before we adopt our agenda, I need to remove, I need a motion to remove item 4 from the Presentations and Proclamations before we vote on our agenda. So can I get a motion to remove item 4?
So moved.
All right. All right, and can I get a second?
Second.
Item 4 from the, you said the Proclamations?
From Presentations and Proclamations.
Understood.
All right. All right, and so you second it. Mr. Davis?
Commissioner Allen.
Commissioner Allen. Okay, y'all said it at the same time. All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Now, Board members, are there any items that you would like to be moved to the regular agenda?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I would like for us to move item number 14 to the regular agenda.
All right, any other Board members, would you like any of the items from the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda at this time? All right. So we're good? All right, at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time, Board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next will be item 5, Presentations and Proclamations. Our first presentation will be the Veteran of the Month. Our Veteran of the Month is Ms. Tamara M. Lawrence. Next will be our proclamation, a proclamation for the American Legion Post 258 that is, that will be given by Chairwoman Dr. Erika Anderson-Henry. And then, our last presentation will be the ARC Regional Award for the Tera Boulevard LCI study, and that will be given by Chairwoman Dr. Erika Anderson-Henry, and Director E.G.K. will come up and do a presentation. So Board members, will you please come to the front? And will the Veteran of the Month and any of your, anyone that is with the Veteran of the Month, will you please come forward as well?
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Veteran of the Month Specialist Tamara M. Lawrence. Ms. Tamara M. Lawrence was born and raised in Jonesboro, North Carolina. She is the only child of Michael and Wanda Lawrence. In 1992, Ms. Lawrence joined the U.S. Army as a petroleum supply specialist. She served in Fort Campbell, Kentucky, Camp Humphrey, South Korea, and Fort Carson, Colorado. During her time in the service, she earned five Army Achievement Medals, two Good Conduct Medals, a National Defense Service Medal, and an Overseas Medal. In addition to her primary role as a petroleum supply specialist, Ms. Lawrence served as an alternate nuclear biological chemical sergeant as part of the 6th Cavalry Brigade in Camp Humphrey, South Korea, which earned her an Army Achievement Medal for her dedication and service to her unit. After her military service, Ms. Lawrence went to fulfill her educational dreams, earning an Associate and Bachelor's Degree from Shorter University, as well as a Master's Degree from Liberty University. Ms. Lawrence is a member of the Soldiers Angels, who voluntarily serve all branches of the military and their families across the country and the world. She also volunteers with the Atlanta Community Food Bank. Ms. Lawrence is a proud mother of one adult son and one adult daughter. She loves watching football, especially her Pittsburgh Steelers, wrestling, and reading. Ladies and gentlemen, Veteran of the Month Specialist Tamara M. Lawrence.
Will any of the veterans like to come up and take a picture as well? Y'all shoot?
I don't think everybody.
Come on. Come on up. You got support. You got support.
I thought they saw what he was up here.
That's where I stand. Hoorah! Hoorah! Hoorah, Hoorah! And one. One, two, three, one, two, last time, one, two. Thank you.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes American Legion Post 258 Incorporated. Within the 2025, American Legion Post 258 has proudly served the city of Jonesboro and Clayton County since 1959, upholding the enduring values of service to country, civic responsibility, and respect for those who have known or been of them. The city of Jonesboro 258 established in 1995 enhances the post impact by providing support to veterans, youth, and families through programs that cultivate leadership, education, and community well-being. The post is affiliated minutes are guided by a clear mission: to serve veterans, their families, and the broader community by promoting patriotism, offering practical assistance, fostering fellowship, and preserving the legacy of military services for future generations. The post's guiding pillars, veteran affairs and rehabilitation, national security, mechanism, and children's and youth, form the foundation of this comprehensive programming, advocacy, and outreach. The post collaborates with a diverse network of partners, including the city of Jonesboro, Clayton County officials, the Clayton County Veterans Service Office, the Chamber of Commerce, local schools, JRTC programs, SCOTI organizations, houses of worship, and various nonprofit groups to maximize the effectiveness and reach of its missions. The post presents a robust schedule of activities and observances, Memorial Day and Veteran Day Seance ceremonies, 2nd of July celebrations, Easter egg hunts, youth leadership programs, scholarship opportunities, fundraising efforts, and community dinners that strengthen community bonds and honor our veteran sacrifices. Thus, as these services and strategic collaborations, American Legion Post 258 demonstrates how organized citizens engagement can address immediate needs while also investing in the long-term needs and character of Clayton County. This proclamation seeks to recognize and affirm the post's ongoing contributions while inviting broader participations from residents, families, schools, businesses, and public institutions in support of veteran-focused services, youth development, and community benefit. Now, therefore, our Chairwoman, Dr. Erika Anderson-Henry, on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize American Legion Post 258 and call on all citizens to proudly advocate and commit to honoring all service members. I encourage all to promote patriotism and civic engagement, and to help those in need. In witness thereof, I hereby, too, set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of November in the year 2025.
All right. Let's give a quick applause. Yes, sir. Seth, Seth, what do you got coming up?
Okay, this weekend, on Saturday, the 8th of November, we'll be doing a blood drive, also community, community awareness program. So if anybody, we need all of Clayton County, especially Jonesboro, Georgia, to come out and support those efforts. We're doing, we're trying to do a better job of getting out into community, and we need all of your support in order for us to fulfill our mission of veterans, family, and community. Thank you.
And again, thank you all for all that you do. Thank you, and thank you for serving our country. All right. All right, Ms. Director E.G.K., do you want us to go back?
Yes.
Yeah, you want us to go back? Okay. We're gonna go back, and then we'll, we're gonna go back to our seats, and Director E.G.K. is gonna do, and we'll come back down after that presentation.
Thank you so much. Hi. Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, good evening. This presentation is to kind of announce the award that we were given by the Atlanta Regional Commission. It's a big recognition for the work we've been doing. The background of the award is that on May 12th, the LCI, Deliverable Center Initiative, was awarded to the county, and it was a joint effort between unincorporated Clayton, the city of Jonesboro, and the city of Lovejoy. The first time LCI awarded such a grant to us, and it was a $400,000 grant. March 23rd to June 24th, we secured the consultant, Pond &amp; Company, and completed the LCI study. July 16th, 2024, the study was adopted by you. By adopting the study, it forces us to implement the work program. It came with a work program, some recommendations as to how to change, and the study was along the whole entire corridor of Tera Boulevard. But we also chose three notes, one for unincorporated Clayton, one for Jonesboro, and one for Lovejoy. You'll get to see the pictures. And the one we picked was the Upper River Road for unincorporated Clayton, and the, around the city center for Jonesboro, and for Lovejoy, where Lovejoy anticipates to have their downtown, so to speak. On October 24th, all that work came to where we won an award, a Regional Excellence Award, for not only how the project was done, but the ambition and how aggressive the study was. The study so far have generate, is, we formed a task force, the Tera Boulevard Task Force half of the study. One of the things you're gonna see coming soon is what we wanted to do with a sign ordinance on Tera. So these are the examples of what that study actually generated. So for that, and so many other things about the study, what we are working with Atlanta Regional Commission, we received, next slide, the Excellence Award. And as you can see in this picture, Madam Chair and the two mayors, at the ceremony, they represented the three jurisdictions. Next. And these are the three notes that were selected by the study, where they had examples of what needs to go in those notes. And definitely for the county note, at Tera Crossing, that type of development we are envisioning to have in that area. You can see the city of Jonesboro, Smith Street, and Tera Boulevard, and Lovejoy, it's on Talmadge Road. So that is really, we still have more work to do out of that LCI. Like I mentioned earlier, we are embarking on a sign ordinance to reimagine Tera Boulevard and reduce the visual clutter on Tera Boulevard. And I will play a little video for you about the, about the ceremony.
The award for visionary planning goes to the Tera Boulevard Liveable Centers Initiative in Clayton County. Tera Boulevard has long been known as a car-centric corridor with fast-moving traffic, limited sidewalks, and an original design that made it hard for people to feel connected. The Tera Boulevard LCI is changing that story. The ambitious study spans 11 miles and more than 5,600 acres, reimagining the corridor as a safe, vibrant, and welcoming place to live, work, and play. The plan identifies three key nodes: Tera Gateway, Jonesboro, and Lovejoy, each with tailored strategies for redevelopment, mobility, placemaking, and community well-being. The vision didn't happen in a vacuum. It's the product of a strong partnership between ARC, Eretropolis Atlanta, Clayton County, and the cities of Jonesboro and Lovejoy. It was shaped by voices of the people who call this corridor home. By linking land use and transportation, the Tera Boulevard LCI delivers a blueprint for multimodal, economically resilient corridor, proving that visionary planning isn't just about maps and models, but about creating a more livable, equitable future for the people who live this reality every day.
So Commissioners, in my estimation, I would say that we're winning.
Yeah. Woo! There's our time. I just wanna also say, before I come down, I wanna thank Mr. E.G.K. and his staff, as well as our mayors, Mayor Jonesboro, Mayor Sada, as well as Marcy Frewellin, Mayor Marcy Frewellin. If you all are here tonight, please come up, and we're gonna take a picture with our award. Again, we are winning, and the South Side is being recognized, and we have to continue pushing for what we need for this area. And I just wanna also make another announcement. The 64.5 million dollars that we had, that we, we thought that we lost for our trails, we are now going to be connecting with the Belt Line. And so now Clayton County, we will be able to move and have that money, and we will be able to connect with the Belt Line and breathe all the way down Tera Boulevard, by Tera Boulevard, Arrowhead area?
I've heard of it.
Yes, Arrowhead, Arrowhead area. So again, we have to connect, we have to communicate, we have to collaborate, and we have to be consistent. And when we work together, great things can continue happening for Clayton County. So let's give a round of applause for everyone who participated in this Tera Boulevard LCI study. Thank you. I have a question. Will you please come down?
I have a question.
Okay.
As do I.
All right.
Okay, so the award was for, I guess, like, the best study, who had the best visual of what they would like to see their community look like?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so do we have any idea when we will be implementing these ideas?
ASAP. ASAP is a short answer. And what we are doing, as you know, that you have to plan, we have a blueprint of what we need to do. We need to adjust our code. So a lot of things are following in place. We have the code, the zoning code rewrite, ongoing. They are paying attention to their award. We have the housing study about to start. We are paying attention to housing needs in the county, and what we are imagining the corridor to be, not just the corridor, but the whole county.
Yes.
So we have the foundational documents element, plan, if you will, to reimagine Clayton County. So that's what we are trying to do, to make sure that we are doing it per our code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes. Hey, Director E.G.K., I saw some photos. Was there an award ceremony for, for this with ARC?
Oh, yes. On October 24th, LCI did their State of the Region.
I must have missed that invitation.
Yeah.
I don't know if any of the other commissioners received it.
Yeah, LCI sent that out.
Yeah, they sent it out to everyone.
Yeah, they sent it out to everyone.
I didn't know that Clayton County was getting an award. So what a wonderful surprise.
Well, we didn't know.
We didn't know either. They didn't tell us.
They, they don't announce before you get there. Yeah.
So it was, it was definitely a surprise, I think, for everybody there, and again, we gotta continue to make master plans across this county of how we want to see the county look, and include our citizens as we get, as we go through those master plans throughout the county. So Mr. E.G.K., you know, continue to revamp those codes, because we've gotta move forward. And I thank you all, and I thank you again for all that you all do.
That actually wasn't my only question.
Okay.
I, I had a question about, can you provide what the status is of the LCI project? You answered Commissioner Allen's question that, you know, this is moving ASAP, but are there any benchmarks that you can elaborate on?
Yeah, it's on, if you look at the backside of the LCI, there are recommendations, which we call the Work Program.
Okay.
And one of that Work Program, we created a Tera Boulevard Task Force in conjunction with the other two cities and Eretropolis Atlanta. Out of that Task Force, we are working on the sign, the sign ordinance on that corridor. That's the first project we chose, to do the sign ordinance. There are other projects that will come. We have a draft, a draft that the members need to read and make sure what's in it, it's applicable to what they want to do, but we want to make the, not even a challenge. The interesting part of the ordinance is that county, city of Jonesboro, and city of Lovejoy will have the same sign ordinance along Tera Boulevard, and they all are, we are working together. It's quite interesting to see where the jurisdictions work together.
So is there an upcoming community meeting that the citizens should participate in?
Not yet. We're trying to make sure everybody's reading the draft ordinance and get, I'm gonna be coming to one of the work sessions to present what we are looking at for the sign ordinance, and ask the Board to give us the permission to continue. But for right now, we drafting the language that I'm gonna present in a work session before it even come for a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Reeves. Hey.
I thought I had my questions answered.
No, no, you didn't.
All right.
I was gonna add one more component to it, I think will help. Mr. E.G.K. spoke specifically about how a lot of the onboarding of our livable communities initiative has really emanated over the last couple of, I guess, the last couple of months. One of the main things that we're doing now, as you will see, you'll get quite a few grant applications from staff asking, can we be part of a grant opportunity? So part of the main thing that we want to do before we do what we consider our community charrettes, is ensure that we have funding in space. As you all know, in most instances, a lot of our funding are at jeopardy, whether you're talking about federal money or even state money. So we're ensuring that, ARC has played a huge role in ensuring that funding is in space. So you will see quite a few additional grant applications coming for, whether we're talking about sidewalk expansion, whether we're talking about destination inclusions, whatever it might be. You'll see quite a few of those in the remainder of this year. The goal come, hopefully, in 2026, we can open up to have what we consider community charrettes, to have a community here directly what we're doing, to get feedback from our citizens. So to give you a little more context, see what will be happening, hopefully, in the next six to seven months, we have a better opportunity to, one, show the community what the plan will be, but more importantly, we want to get out there and have money to fund these respective projects, so that's the main thing.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Board members, are there any other questions at this time? All right, will everyone please come down so we can take our picture? Please. All right. All right, we will now move on to item 6 on the agenda, and that is public comment. But before we start public comment, are there any public officials that are here today? Please stand. I see Mr. Brenna Hill, Clayton County Public Schools, District 7. All right. Do we have any more public officials?
Where are our judges here?
All right. Thank you. All right, next.
First, we have Judge Fox.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If you, you said, what now? Oh, I see Judge, okay, Judge Fox, is that you over there? You know I can't see. Is that you, Judge Fox? All right, please stand. All right, all right, let's give it up for Judge Fox as well. I'm still looking for it. All right, thank you for coming out, and we appreciate your support, Judge Fox and Ms. Brenna Hill. Next, we will move on to our public comment. All right. Madam Clerk?
Citizens will be given a three-minute maximum time limit to speak before the Board Commissioners. Please note that all public comments must be limited to the matters on the agenda or over matters which governing the body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain the course demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board Members, shouting, and using obscene language. Following 30 minutes of hearing from the public, the Board of Commissioners will allow the remainder of citizens who have signed up to be heard at the next Tuesday Business Meeting. Citizens, please speak clearly when saying your name and address. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're gonna finish up our agenda, I mean, our names from the October 21st Board Meeting. So the first person to please come up is Ms. Bernadine Brodas. Mr. Peter, did I butcher your name? Is it, tell me your last name. I know I did. Did I do it right?
Pardon? Yes, yes, that's correct.
I said it right? Okay, all right.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Please give us your name and county of residence. Thank you.
My name is Peter Friedrich. I'm from Fulton County.
All right.
Please give me a moment. Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
I'm here to warn you, educate you about how Senate Bill 375 would impact the county. Senate Bill 375 would require that every Georgia agency enforcing discrimination law, including agencies serving Clayton County residents, consider the definition of Hindu-phobia when investigating complaints. The bill defines Hindu-phobia as antagonistic, destructive, and derogatory attitudes and behaviors towards Hinduism, not towards Hindu people, towards Hinduism as an ideology, and it never defines what Hinduism means, who counts as a Hindu, or what antagonistic attitudes are. That vagueness is the weapon. This bill did not emerge from Clayton County's needs. Senator Sean Still faces seven felony charges for allegedly serving as a fake elector in Trump's scheme to overturn the 2020 election. Trump's scheme to overturn the 2020 election. After that indictment, Still received $10,800 from the Hindus of Georgia PAC and Kona leaders who developed the PAC. Still admits on video that he developed this bill through ongoing conversations with these groups. Multiple major donors to this PAC are documented activists with the Overseas Friends of the B J P, which is registered with the U.S. Justice Department as a foreign agent for India's ruling party. The same organizations, they opposed California legislation protecting Dalit and low caste workers from caste discrimination. They don't want actual protection for victims, they want protection from criticism. And they found a seven-time felony defendant willing to sell it to them for $10,800. Now here's what happens when foreign governments get American agencies to enforce their definition of criticism. Mazraab Zahra, University of Missouri faculty member, she fled India after documenting human rights abuses in Kashmir. India's response, police beat her father and brother, harassed her neighbors, revoked her passport. People avoid her family out of fear. That's called transnational repression, which is when a foreign government reaches into America to punish critics by targeting their families back home. Under this bill, discussing what happened to Professor Zahra's family becomes potentially actionable Hindu-phobia in Georgia's civil rights investigations. Clayton County residents criticizing India's governments could face the same mechanism, investigations triggered by undefined terms written by foreign agents. And consider Clayton State University, 6,000 students, faculty teaching global politics. S B 375 stigmatizes campus discussion of escalating Hindu nationalist persecution of Christians and Muslims back in India, turning academic freedom into a civil rights complaint. A student writes about attacks on churches in Monopur in India. A professor assigns readings on anti-conversion laws targeting missionaries in India. Those become complainable offenses using a definition written by the same people who opposed protecting caste discrimination victims. Clayton County did not elect this commission to let foreign government donors write Georgia law.
Thank you Mr. Friedrich, your time is up, thank you so much, and I want to get with you, if you have a card or any information, I'd like to get it from you. If you, please don't leave too early tonight.
Yes ma'am, I'll leave a card, I'll come back with a card, and I have for every member of the council of the commission an information packet on the issue.
Okay, you can give it to, you can give it to our security.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, next will be Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Greetings Chairwoman, Vice Chair, Board Members. I stand before you this evening, as I came previously to ask for your support with Calvary Refuge, I wanted to come this evening to say thank you. Thank you for allocating funds to Calvary Refuge, project presence in all of our non-profit
organizations. State your name and city.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sabrina Hill, Jonesboro, Georgia. So I wanted to come back and say thank you, just as I publicly asked for your assistance, I wanted to make sure that I publicly came back and said thank you, because it is always a tremendous help when we are funding our nonprofit organizations. And so I want to, in this moment, with, to ask for your support again, with the uncertainty of our SNAP benefits and our WIC benefits and our healthcare and all the things that we are facing in Clayton County and abroad, I'm asking if we can all come together, one Clayton, one community, one district leaders, elected officials and all those who have resources and the opportunity to serve our community. I would like us to come together and do one big giveaway, distribution and serve in our families. It appears that this will be an ongoing process, and I would like to see us come together collectively and make sure that we are serving everyone in Clayton County. And I want to say congratulations on your A R C award. I love what I see. In order for us to continue to have the beauty of our community and our county, we have to make sure that we are serving our families. And so I just wanted to say thank you, I look forward to us working together collectively, and I am just so grateful to be serving our community and our families at a time such as this. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Hill, that's an awesome idea, thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Hill.
I'd also like to let you know, we do have this Thursday, I've been talking with Dr. Taylor over at Sequoia Middle School.
Yes.
And he and I are planning a series of food drive giveaways for that Riverdale area and also all of Clayton County. So we've started that, we met last week prior to the Saturday SNAP deadline to begin to formulate some thoughts, as well as I've met with some other folks as well.
And so I would love for us to come together, because it sounds like you and I are doing the same thing, November 6th Sequoia, November 12th Rex Middle, November 20th Tara Stadium. And so, just so we're not doing everything in silos, because, I mean, actually it sounds just like what I've been doing, and I'd love to work together.
I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Hill. I also want to announce too, before we move to our next person, that Pastor Wooder, who was here, we're having a food drive on Thursday at New Vision, well not New Vision, but at his church as well. I'll get all the information and make sure that I get it, we're getting it out to the public, you can go online and look it up. Next will be Judith Cotton. Alright, next will be Regina Deloche. Next will be Yvonne Polite. Next will be Ida Hamilton. Next would be Ruby Sarden. Alright, that now completes the October 21st names, and let me move to the next list. Alright, next will be Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District Three constituent and resident unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. In keeping with my commitment to a balanced, fair and impartial, real-time citizens evaluation of your performances as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I will begin by acknowledging, honoring and recognizing your accomplishments, achievements and successes to date. And I will start off with our Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson-Henry. Madam Chairwoman, you are excelling mightily with great success, accomplishments and achievements. You are the chairwoman that is everywhere, every place, all over, all around, virtually all locations throughout unincorporated Clayton County, in this seven cities, Riverdale, Lovejoy, Morrow, Forest Park, Lake City, College Park and Riverdale. Your quarterly Clayton County, future growth of Clayton County meetings that you've been holding in all the district, community, commission districts are well organized, accepting the run with excellent participation and excellent presentations by your guests, that it keeps the Clayton County citizens informed, and your engagement with the citizens stands out. You also had a successful state of the county program back in March, and you also had a successful transportation summit. And also doing public commenting, I personally recognize that you show citizens respect, that you give them your attention, even critics, you have several critics that have said no good that you do, but all of the not so good, so I hope, one especially the listeners who made a comment about my being, need to be more fair and balanced, which is hypocrisy, so hopefully that citizen will be more fair and balanced as well. But you're to be committed, because you do recognize citizens that bring serious, legitimate and immediate actions, immediate actions that need to be addressed before you and the commission, so you show them respect and you give them time that is well noted. So Madam Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson-Henry, my younger sister, who I'm very proud of in your accomplishments and achievements, you're to be celebrated, applauded and praised for your accomplishments, achievements and successes to date, and I assure you that you will have many more in the days, weeks, months and years to come. I will continue with acknowledgement and praises and recognitions at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners regular business meeting. Good day.
Thank you Dr. Anderson. Alright, next will be Trella Daniels.
Good evening Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and respective board members. My name is Trella Daniels, District One, Clayton County. Proverbs 31:8 and 9 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly; defend the rights of the poor and needy." I stand here on behalf of the people among us who often go unseen, the ones some may view as a burden, who've lost their fight and voice because too many have looked away instead of reaching out. But I'm here tonight to change the narrative, to give a face to the faceless, because these aren't strangers, they're people who live right amongst us, in our county, our neighbors, our parents, our veterans, our seniors, people who could be any one of us if life had gone a little differently. Ms. G, a senior who lost her apartment in a community center, not because she didn't pay her rent, but because she took in her mentally ill daughter, adult daughter, who had nowhere else to go. Then it was Mrs. G, a young mother caring for her autistic son, whose own mother was sick herself. She worked hard, but as her bills piled up and rent kept rising, she couldn't keep up. And Ms. R, a pregnant, a pregnant woman sleeping in the woods before Calvary took her in. Let that sink in for a minute, you're pregnant and sleeping in the woods, carrying a child with nowhere to go. And lastly, Ms. T, a single mom of three, working as a caseworker helping others but fellow hard times herself. She lost her housing, she just needed a little helping hand. She got into a shelter, saved money, found an apartment, and then went on to graduate college. Later she moved to Georgia, eventually ended up in Clayton County where she bought a home, and now she spends her time giving back to Calvary, advocating for others in need. Yes, that was me. Today, Calvary is that place for Clayton County. It gives people a chance to catch their breath, find resources, start rebuilding their lives. So tonight, I'm asking you to continue not just to fund them, but to continue to fund their requests. They're not asking for opulence, they're asking for survival. Because if Calvary closes, the people won't just disappear, they'll be out here trying to survive in cars, behind stores and on streets that were never meant to be a home, and that affects all of us, our public safety, our public health and our community. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you Ms. Anderson. And Ms. Anderson, I just want to say that we're putting together a plan in place for our unhoused, we're going to continue to work with Calvary. I know last week, I think it was the board chair, he came up and was asking, had we funded Calvary? Yes, we have funded Calvary, and so we're going to continue to do what we've been doing and also bring in the community, because again, we can't be in silos anymore. We've got to work together. So all of us will be working together to make sure that Calvary, and any of our unhoused, anybody who deals with our unhoused in the community is working together to make sure that we give them the sufficient housing, because no one, and I'm going to say this, no one in America should be without housing. It's crazy, or food, or anything. So we're going to continue to move forward on that. So I thank you for coming up tonight and speaking for those who can't speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next is Tamara Lawrence.
I would not expect to speak right now.
Did you want to speak Ms. Lawrence?
Um, no, not really.
Well, you're good, if you'd like me.
Okay. I just wanted to say to the board, thank you so much for the opportunity.
To say your name in the county residence.
Tamara Lawrence, Clayton County, College Park. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to represent Clayton County. I've been here twenty-five years now, I was military, and I am an employee of Clayton County, work in the traffic division, so I'm pretty sure I'm seeing you once or twice. But just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to represent Clayton County. As a veteran, that was the best part of my life, of representing my country. My parents thought I was going to be home in two weeks after that, but I did eight years and would love to be a better part of Clayton County, part of my veteran community and just for everyone above, so thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And have done as well. Alright, next is Ms. Joan McNeil.
Good evening Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Community. My name is Joan McNeil, and I am one of the student navigators from Clayton County Public Schools here in Jonesboro. The Homeless Education Department and I am here to share with you that the month of November is Homelessness Awareness Month. We embrace the color green as the color of homeless awareness, and we are kindly asking everyone to join us in wearing green as our theme is green, wear green and grow. Ms. Hill is passing out green pens. The Homeless Education Department serves over 2,000 students, representing approximately 900 families each year. According to the McKinney-Vento Law, which governs the homeless education programs nationwide, a family is considered homeless if they lack a fixed, regular and adequate nighttime residence. Under the McKinney-Vento Law, a family is considered homeless if they are doubled up with relatives or friends due to financial hardship, they're living in a shelter, car, abandoned property or otherwise unhoused. The Homeless Education Department's main goal is to provide support that promotes academic success for students. The department, also known as H E D, partners with agencies and organizations that directly provide families with food, housing, clothing and other needed resources. We directly support the families by providing the required clear backpacks, uniforms, school supplies, laundry and toiletry kits and coordinate transportation to and from the school of origin. Our department has green ribbons that are being passed out, along with some literature which shows support for our students experiencing homelessness. If you like additional ribbons or information, please feel free to contact us at 770-473-3250 or stop by our office, 2260 Old Rex, Morrow Road in Morrow. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please remember to join us in wearing green this month.
Thank you. Let's give our Homeless Education Department a round of applause from Clayton County Public Schools. Also, I would like for everyone to please join us in actually putting on your pen tonight, because it is Homeless Education Awareness Month, so please make sure that you put on your pen tonight. I'd like to ask all of our residents and our Board of Commissioners to please bring your pen for Homeless Awareness Month. Thank you so much. Ms. Hill, you on here again, can I give your time to someone else?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next will be Ms. Jerian Hawes.
Hello, thank you so much for affording me this opportunity. Rob gave me notes, because most of you all know who I am and you all know that, you know, sometimes I'm me. I brought this photo of Commissioner Sona.
Ms. Hawes, please state your name.
Oh, okay, my name is Jerian Hawes, District Three, unincorporated Jonesboro. A proud Clayton County resident. I love my community and my community loves me. So, this is a photo that I was awarded because of a magazine that I launched fifteen years ago. It was out of a spec, okay, do not. Okay, do not tell Rob that I did not read. Commissioner Davis. All right, that's all I'm saying. So, I am just so proud of my community. I have always been very, very proud of my community. I've been here for a very long time. Most of you all know me as Commissioner Allen, as you stated. You don't know me well, and that you don't find interest in the publication, but you want to talk about the community. I want to tell you that the publication talks about the community, and we only serve in a brilliant and beautiful way. I love this community. I don't have to prove it to anybody, because most of y'all know I went to jail for this community. That's not in the notes. Rob is going to be upset, because it's recorded. Commissioner Davis has agreed to be in the next issue, but I proudly present, "We Are Rooted." This is the first issue, and the vision came from Madam Chair. And at the time, this is collaboration, y'all. Madam Chair, my time is almost up. Okay, I'm sorry, I got to talk to y'all. Madam Chair, now I will... What do I say, that one twenty-four? It was not what you would think it is today. And I just want to say thank you for believing in me and believing in what Spirit called me to do. Everybody on this board knows, with the exception of Commissioner Allen, that this is what I was called to do for this community. Other people tried to do it, but they couldn't, and they were not successful. Somehow, some way, the money always shows up, and we always get the issues printed out. So I'm telling everybody here, I'm here to serve. We're going to tell the good news of our community, and I got forty-eight seconds left. "We Are Clayton" is more than a magazine. It is a storytelling platform built to strengthen the identity, visibility, and pride of Clayton County. My goal is to highlight the people, places, partnerships that shape this community. And if you ain't for us, then in my opinion, you are against us. So you won't be in "We Are Clayton" magazine, because all we're talking about is the good. I love the leadership here. Y'all doing some great things together, and we can only do it together. We got to stand up. Like, somebody said, "Jerian," you the they now. Y'all, come on, let's do this. Y'all got the platform to tell your stories in the way in which you need to tell it, the way you want to tell it, and you know if somebody's saying something about it. Y'all know me. I got to go. My time is up. So, I brought four magazines, because Commissioner Allen said that she wasn't interested. Dietrich, you left this magazine on the floor. I felt like, you didn't mean to. All right, all right. So, these are the four. And Ms. Allen, if you like one, I will get one too. But I don't like to waste paper, because it costs forty-three thousand dollars.
All right, next is Ms. Teresa Tally.
Teresa Tally, District Three. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What do Hampton, Lovejoy, College Park, Jonesboro, Riverdale, Marlboro, Lake City, Forest Park, and Conley have in common? They are all in Clayton County. With that said, we only have one Division of Children and Family Services, which has been inoperable since two thousand twenty-four. It's November two thousand twenty-five, same issues. I went by there today, still closed. They said hopefully it'll be open two thousand twenty-six. I understand a pipe which was broken. Mold and mildew would not be fixed by a wetback. The residents rely on this broken system for help. Our leaders are not taking this serious, because they probably don't have to use the system. I use the system. This building probably needs to be demolished, or it needs to be to a different location. This issue would not go away. Henry County and Fayette County cannot help Clayton residents. Where would defects become a priority? I hear all the good things that's happening in Clayton County, which are good. But we need defects. It's only one. Maybe you all could find a new location. You probably by now need to replace all the drywall, the floors. But we're really hoping that you all address this. And the reason I name all the cities within the county, because everyone rely on this system. Trying to get somebody on the phone is useless. Your caseworker don't answer. You can't leave a message, because the voicemail is full. These are ongoing issues that we, the residents, have to deal with. So I'm asking that you all please come together as a team and deal with this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. And Ms. Tally, before, we've, I have talked to the director this week, and she said that the state is coming in also to help with the repairs over there. But thank you for your suggestion at looking at another building as well. And so we're going to continue to collaborate till we get everything fixed for defects. Thank you. All right, next will be Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, Madam Chair, members of the board, and my fellow citizens. Let me just first say, my fellow citizens who got this little pen, please don't leave this little baggie laying on the floor, because somebody will say we're in here doing something else than what we're doing. With that being said, I'll get on with what I have to say tonight. This month, we celebrate two, two holidays. We all know the one we learned about in first grade, and the whole USA celebrates as Thanksgiving Day. The second holiday is not celebrated by the whole country, nor is it even celebrated by the state, but should be celebrated by the whole county. And that date is November thirtieth, the birth of our county. And with that being said, what should be celebrated in mine would be the health, happiness, prosperity, and cleanliness of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. All right, next will be...
Madam Chair, that's it. We have one more. That's it.
All right, I have two. Can, Board members, can we hear the last two, if you all don't mind? Do we have to put that to a vote?
No, for public comment, it's only thirty minutes.
Okay, so we can't. We put it to vote before you saying no now. We've heard other people.
For zoning, you can...
Zoning, okay.
Yeah, but for public comments, thirty minutes.
I didn't want them to have to come for another...
Can we take away the time?
Yeah.
We have to pass a resolution.
All right, let's move on, y'all. All right, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for your comments. They are duly noted. This now completes our public comments. We will now move on to our consent agenda. All right, at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. We will now move on to our regular agenda, and we will start off with item fourteen. Ms. Ambles.
Good evening, Clayton County Board of Commissioners. I'm Pamela Ambles, the Human Resources Director for Clayton County, and also a very proud citizen of District Three. And good evening to our Clayton County citizens who are here and those who are tuning in. In regards to LR one oh one four nine, in accordance with the provisions of Civil Service Rules, Section Four and Five, which govern our compensation, classification, and benefit plans, Human Resources, on behalf of community slash economic development, is requesting your consideration to set the entry compensation for Planning Administrator from Grade Twenty-seven Step One to Grade Thirty-three Step One. Absent of any budgetary considerations, the cost of this request is twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. And this particular request does support the recent merger of community development and economic development.
All right, Board members, is there any, y'all have any questions at this time? Commissioner Reeves?
Is this, is this personnel change request, is this separate from the consolidation of community development and economic development? That was just last month.
Yes, ma'am, it is, it is a separate request to go along with what was approved for the merger.
And is this funding coming from the funding source for economic development?
So I may have to defer to interim CFO Jackson when I make this statement, because I'm not a finance person. But if it's my understanding that the budget, that the position may already be budgeted... Well, let me, let me say it this way. The incumbent who vacated the Planning Administrator position, this is the salary that she left. So the money, I don't know how that works, Angela. Don't want to step on your toes. I don't know how that works. But I believe that the twenty-nine thousand dollars is already captured in the budget, because the incumbent, that's the salary that she was making when she left the county. Is that correct, Angela? Did I misspeak?
I would need to look into that, Pam. When we did the cost out, we simply did it from a twenty-seven-one to thirty-three-one. I didn't have a name of an individual associated with that position at the time.
Um, I got my phone. You want to see the email? Because I don't want to put that incumbent name on record. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't misspeak about the finances. But I wanted to throw that out there to the board in regards to the cost.
You got any other questions?
No other questions.
All right, all right. At this time, I need a... Did you have any questions?
Well, yes, about, I guess, similar to that. But is that position budgeted? So, I guess you're still answering that, or...
Yes, ma'am, the position is budgeted, and it's budgeted at the amount that would cover the thirty-three-one. That's why I wanted to talk with Angela, to be sure that I had not misspoken. So yes, ma'am, the funding is there, because the incumbent was making that when she left.
Thank you.
Are those funds being transferred from one department to another? Are those budgeted within that same department?
Budgeted within the same department.
Are there any other questions at this time, Board members? All right, at this time, I need a motion to approve the CD slash ED Personnel Change Request.
So moved.
I second it. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ambles.
Thank you, and thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Next, we will move to item twenty-four. All right, Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Recommendation for a co-op purchase. So the recommendation is to approve through the MPP Gov Cooperative Purchase. The authorized dealer is going to be Ten Eight Fire and Safety LLC. This is for the lease purchase of six pumps. I do want to go over the numbers here and to talk about the process of what we're moving forward with at the Board's pleasure. The first one is, we will purchase one of the pumps in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. That is going to be available for purchase now through the fire department's fire fund. The next items are the five remaining pumps, and that is in the amount of four million two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars. And that is for the lease purchase, which will be determined by the Board. The department's recommendation memo, the cooperative agreement, as well as the vendor's proposals are attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairwoman or her designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Board members, are there any questions at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
What's a pumper? It is apparatus, I'll let Chief, well, here is Chief Swett.
Chief Swett, please come to the podium, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. Commissioner Hamburg, a pumper is a fire engine, fire truck.
About the fire truck, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, it's a large-scale pumper, carries seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water, has the capacity to pump two thousand gallons of water per minute. So that is our standard response vehicle when it comes to our firefighting apparatus.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Well, I guess, if we're financing the four-point-one, why would we not just finance the other part? What's the benefit here with new financing terms, hopefully, that we're saving? What's our net savings in doing this?
So this part, I'll certainly turn back over to Chief Swett. And I think we also have our financial consultant here as well to discuss the financing for the lease purchase and the cash purchase.
Because my thought was, we're just approving the purchase, not the financing at this meeting.
That is correct.
For this agenda item.
Yes, sir. It is my understanding, and Director Rogers, please.
Okay, so, hold on, hold on.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Okay, so what are we doing tonight?
The request tonight that Director Rogers just read out is to approve the actual purchase of the six pieces of fire apparatus.
The fire truck?
Fire trucks, yes. One of which will be paid one-hundred percent out of the current adopted fiscal year twenty-six budget, where I have budgeted funds sitting in my capital lease payment account. Once again, a few weeks ago, we were here. We began financing our fire apparatus, our initial purchases back in two thousand twenty, where we bought eight fire engines, financed those for five years, paid those off in fiscal year twenty-five. Moving into fiscal year twenty-six, I left my same annual lease payment in the twenty-six adopted budget. So, working through some stuff over these last two weeks, it is now our recommendation to purchase one straight out with a million dollars that is sitting in my adopted budget now, and finance the remaining five. What is being read tonight is for the Board to approve the purchase of the apparatus. One being fully funded now, the remaining five to be determined over the next few weeks as the lending institution that will provide the actual financing.
Okay, so what are we discussing? We're discussing twenty-four, the recommendation of the purchase. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that is because of the price that we had talked about previously increased. And so we need to do it as two parts. You're doing the purchase that will go ahead and get us into that space with Ten Eight. And the next one decision will be about the leasing agreement, which direction the county wants to go with what company you want to do the master lease agreement with.
Okay, so we only doing one thing tonight?
Well, there's, you know, we can, we should, I guess, have the discussion in regards to the leasing. I know there were some questions from the Commissioners.
I know there were some questions from the Commissioners about why we chose the company or what company. So we did go back to the financial consultant for the county and they looked at two different leasing agreements. And so they're here tonight if you need additional information on what we need to move forward with, what's best for the county, I guess.
Okay, so right now we need to approve purchase, making the purchase?
Yes ma'am, we would like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion at this time?
So, yeah, I would like to hear from our financial advisor on this.
Mr. Wallace, please. Commissioner Hammerick?
Caught before the horse?
No, I don't believe so. And the reason I say that is because we're talking about the purchase. So if we're talking about the actual physical purchase or the transactional purchase, then we're talking about spending money. If this is just to recommend, which I'm agreeing with Chief Sweat, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm sorry.
Chief Sweat.
I'm going to start singing y'all, I'm going to start singing.
I apologize, I apologize. But we have to take the recommendation, take the recommendation of our fire professionals saying, hey, we need equipment. And that's what I'm looking at. From this agenda item here, it looks like we are just basically voting to grant him that request for equipment. Now, when we come to the transactional portion of it, that's where I want to speak to our financial advisor.
Okay, so can we go ahead with what's on the agenda for now and then make the discussion? We want to make the purchase and all.
Once that...
Vote on the purchase and then discuss whatever the finances and all are. Because I think that's going to be a long discussion.
Once that, those funds are mentioned, I want to hear from the financial advisor before I vote on this.
All right, Mr. Wallace?
Thank you. So Commissioner Hammerick, one of the reasons why we would talk a little bit about the financing, you all are required to avoid a 1% increase in the cost on November the 6th, which was about $5 million total and 1% is $50,000. If you all tonight agree to buy the fire trucks from Pierce Trucks and 10-8 and you sign the purchase of the trucks from Pierce, you'll avoid that $50,000 increase. The way their contract works, from the day you sign that, you've got 30 days to pay for it. So when you make a decision tonight to buy them, you kind of want to know how you're going to fund it. And so you ask a question, we decided, the original proposal for you two weeks ago was a million dollar down payment on the, was it five trucks, six trucks?
Six trucks.
Six trucks. You will make a million dollar down payment and finance the rest and pledge all six trucks as collateral for the loan to buy the rest of them. And Georgia law, because you're doing it as lease purchase, an annual lease obligation, Georgia law doesn't want you to pledge that $1 million of cash because if any subsequent county commission comes in and doesn't renew that lease, the six trucks are collateral, you would lose that million dollars plus the six trucks and that violates Georgia's anti-gratuity provision. And so Chief Sweat had a simple solution to that. He said, why don't I just buy one of the trucks with cash and only finance five trucks? Great solution and that's why we're bringing that proposal to you. Then Commissioner Davis tonight asked a question, would I be better off to just finance all six trucks and keep my million dollars? And so as the purchasing lady just said, what's your name?
Ms. Rogers.
Ms. Carol Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, I emailed you a whole question, I know. We have. So the way Ms. Rogers laid it out, we went back to the marketplace and got other bids. PNC is the captive bank that Pierce uses for financing and they quoted terms for the loan. We went out and got other bids. The best one was Truist Bank and Truist Bank came in at 3.88%. Two weeks ago, the rate before we, I think, was 4.06.
Chief Sweat, was that the rate that you all got? You were looking at another bank?
So I'll keep going. So PNC was the one that Pierce had brought Chief Sweat. And two weeks ago it was 4.06. And so today, just a little while ago, PNC gave us a rate of 3.82. So you had Truist at 3.88 and PNC at 3.82. The problem with PNC Bank is they have prepayment penalties. That if you wanted to prepay it, if interest rates were to decline and you want to refinance it, they won't let you refinance at all for year one and year two. Now, the lady I talked to on the phone at PNC Bank, she said you can call them up and they would let you do it, but it's not in the writing, it's not in the legal documents. And so I would prefer it to be in the documents whether they were going to allow us to refinance or not. So I asked my analyst today on the way down to run numbers, what if rates were to fall 1.5%? So instead of 3.88%, this time next year they're 1.5% lower. How much money would you save? And we would save about $26,000 a year over a four-year period. That's about, what is it, about $130,000 a year, $170,000 a year. That 3.88% versus the 3.82% only saves you a total of $7,000 over the five-year life of the lease. And so that's a lot of rigmarole and so I wanted to write y'all a memo and have y'all at a next meeting discuss how you wanted to finance it, which of those two options you wanted or did you want me to get another option? But I want y'all to be mindful that if you vote for it tonight, you're locking yourself in between now and December the 4th to finance it some kind of way. And then the last one, and I talk so much, the million dollars that we would buy the first pumper, why don't we finance that as well? So the interest rate that we're earning in Georgia Fund 1 right now is 4.28%. And if the borrowing rate is 3.8%, we're making a 1% profit on keeping our money. So in a scheme of things, it would be better off to finance all of them and not put the million dollars down because you'd make that 1% profit. The problem is the 4.3% isn't guaranteed. So if interest rates were to go down and it goes below 3.8%, then you would have been better off to use your cash. So...
What was that threshold again?
So the interest rate right now is 4.3% and the borrowing rate's 3.8. So I misstated, that's 50 basis points, that's a half of 1% profit. And the Fed, you know, when they meet, they lower interest rates usually by a quarter of 1% increments. So it would just be two more reductions by the Fed that you'd be even up to the 3.8. And so experts think through the course of '26, there might have as many as four rate reductions. But nobody knows for sure. And you all don't have to decide that tonight. But when you're thinking about it, would you be better off to pay cash or would you be better off to finance it? Right now, you're making a profit, so be better off to finance. In the future, it would be just two rating rate reductions by the Fed that you'd be even up.
Can I ask this question?
Yes sir.
If there's no prepayment penalty and that interest rate does fall to below that threshold that you're speaking about, could you then use your cash since there's no prepayment penalty to go ahead and pay that million dollars or whatever that portion that you want to pay off?
Yes sir.
Would that be beneficial financially?
Ah, yes sir, very much so.
Board members, is there any more discussion at this time?
Quick question. You said that, Mr. Wallace, you said your recommendation was for us to discuss what the financing and the personaging of the trucks, so item number 24, both of them at the next work session.
So I would encourage you, if you want to purchase the trucks, decide to do it tonight because it'll save you $50,000. But when you make that decision, you're locking yourself in to finance it some kind of way.
For me...
Is there any other discussion at this time?
Well, yes, but this is more of an operational question. I'm not sure if it's for CEO Stanford or for Chief Sweat. Chief Sweat must have sat down.
Chief Sweat, you can go to the podium.
I can't see you behind Angela. It's more of an operations question. It seems that we've put ourselves in a bit of a corner because we have to make the decision by November 6, which is Thursday. But I think either in last week's meeting or in one of the emails, this conversation began in March and I'm just curious, you know. I feel like the first time that I saw this on the agenda for discussion was in, what, the October 21st meeting? And so I'm just curious about what the process is for us to make these types of, especially, you know, large leasing and financial decisions.
Can we speak up?
Yeah, I can.
So Commissioner, a couple of things as Chief Sweat was going through now, AKA Keith Sweat. Going through the process.
He doesn't know who Keith Sweat is.
It's a compliment, Chief.
That part. But in short, as he talked to our advisor about what is the interest rates out in space, my advisor provided him context at space and time. Interest rates were a little higher than as Chief Sweat talked specifically about locking in, knowing that this will be coming forth based upon what he was getting from the market, what he was getting from the advisors in space.
Oh, my buying of them straight up, like...
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, my question is, why is it that we're just discussing this in October, November?
Got it, so we get to that part.
Date, okay.
Right. So based upon the rates that were provided to the chief at the time, we were looking at locking into that rate. When our advisor saw that based upon the market rate, there's fluctuation, he then provided context, hey, we might be able to provide a better rate. Once he got that information provided to the chief, then we recognized there were some other options that we need to bring. Hence, once we got to bringing it to you in the form of an agenda item, then there was other options that we thought would be viable and better. So that's why we're in the discussion today. But when we initially had the first discussion, it didn't call for that.
That's not quite my question. My question is how come we are only having this discussion in October for a purchasing deadline that's November 6?
When did that decision get made and why did they learn about it?
Why are we doing it now?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wallace.
Chief Sweat answers.
So, Madam Vice Chair, as I've stated, we've purchased fire apparatus and financed them several times throughout the course of my tenure for the last 27 years, specifically my beginnings back in 2009 when I progressed through the organization, began to manage the actual fire budget. As we all know, not to get too granular, we have a dedicated fire tax. That money is collected through our tax commissioner and then that is our annual operating budget when it comes to the fire service. So with that, we, myself currently, Chief Merk in the past, previous fire chiefs before him, we have been tasked through the roles and responsibilities of the fire chief to manage that particular fund to ensure that we have enough funding across the 12-month adopted fiscal year as well as a savings account, if you will, to continue to develop and progress this fire department forward. So back to answer your specific question, if you recall fiscal year 25, I've stated that we paid off our last eight trucks. My last payment was made in fiscal year 25. Fiscal year 25 ended on June 30th of 2025, correct? So in March of 2025, I began to look toward the next purchase, which is the one we're discussing now. Original email went out on March 31st to the CFO, Mr. Ed Wallace, other people asking for, hey, I'm looking to purchase the next round of trucks. Can't afford eight, I don't feel comfortable locking us into debt on the cost of eight. I'm going to drop it down to six. I began that process. As I worked through the quotes as well as preparing my fiscal year 26 budget, of course, they didn't go into play until July 1 when I was actually approved, had the dedicated million dollars in my capital lease payment account. That is when I moved this over to purchasing through her department. It takes several months for all that to take place and get the actual purchasing of the units to this Board for formal adoption.
Okay, got it. I just, y'all know I have a lot of questions. So I have a lot of questions, like specifically about the trucks. I didn't see, you know, specific details around the specs of the trucks and the packet. But I know we're also having a conversation around traffic calming and there are a couple of cities across the country that are actually looking at purchasing smaller fire trucks that are easier to maneuver and are on commercial truck chassis, chassis? And so I just, for me, I was wondering where the Commissioners have the opportunity to provide input on what does, you know, the future of fire trucks and fire apparatus in the county look like, especially as we're having conversations around housing, around traffic calming and, you know, how can we integrate that conversation with, you know, the maneuverability of the traffic trucks?
So, commercial chassis, we've tried. Once again, I've been here 27 years. We had commercial chassis when I first came into our organization. Simply don't last with the call volume that we have in this community. We currently have a fully identical fleet when it comes to our fire apparatus. So the six fire apparatus we're looking at purchasing now are identical to the ones we purchased five years ago in 2020. Also, some challenges just managing the current fire service is having uniformity across the Board, especially when it comes to our entry-level firefighters as they progress through the organization and learn how to actually drive apparatus. Having one uniform piece of fire apparatus throughout our 17 fire stations is key. So, commercial chassis, we've tried and they simply do not last. We've tried smaller apparatus, Chief Merk during his tenure, as well as mine, working the budget with him. We bought three commercial 550 chassis with a fire pump on it, ran those for several years and they are just simply not holding up, once again, to the call volume that we see in our community.
All right, Board members, any other questions at this time?
I do have one more suggestion. Like I said, I trust you that this is what you need, this is what you need. You're the professional in this. If you sent the specs out anywhere, I wouldn't know what I was looking at. So I trust you on that. But when it comes to the financing, my portion of this or my thought with this is that I would like to somehow, Attorney Reed, amend this to just vote on the, signing off on the purchase of it minus the, what is it, million dollar payout? Can we do that?
Mr. Wallace, I'll get that as part of the financing, so you to approve purchasing it, I'll bring you the options of the $1 million or finance and all of it and you can decide at a later date.
And then we figure out which way...
So you're not locking yourself into that if you approve it tonight?
But what we do now save, what is it, the $50,000 by going ahead and signing the contract to move forward with the purchase of the fire trucks.
Yes sir.
Commissioner Davis, if I can. Mr. Ed brought forth the idea of financing all six. Once again, it's my responsibility as your fire chief to manage this fire fund, which I have done since 2009. I am very cautious when I go to put this organization in debt. The way I have laid it out now, my recommendation is to use my current million dollars in this current adopted budget and buy one truck and finance the remaining five. That way that I will ensure that my annual payment stays below the threshold that I have historically ran to ensure that I can, that the fire fund and the tax base can support that payment over the next five years. So, once again, that would be my recommendation.
And thank you Chief, too, for always having that fire fund in place and in order. So I really appreciate that.
And I thank you too. I think this is a healthy conversation to undertake. For me, it's, even if you kept that million dollars in for a partial year, we've just saved more, we've actually saved more than that $50,000 that first part of the year. And if there is no prepayment, we can still then put it in. And we've actually lowered our total overall cost.
Okay, can we?
All right, at this time, I need a, thank you Chief, you can have a seat. At this time, I need a motion for the recommendation for the cooperative purchase of the six fire pumpers and trade-in of multiple vehicles.
I move that we approve...
CP number 25-119.
Repeat it again, please, because I can't see it.
Just read 24.
I can't see it at all.
That we, recommendation for cooperative purchase, CP 25-119, purchase of six fire trucks, pumpers, and trade-in of multiple vehicles of Clayton County, Georgia. Chief Tim Sweat.
Minus the, that's just for approval of purchase only without the financing arm in place in this one.
And would you like to second that, Mr. Davis? Or I'll second it?
I'm trying to figure out who's seconding.
I made the motion.
She made the motion, you can second it.
So that's, we have that motion now without that. I just want to make sure before I second it.
The only thing that's before you right now is the purchase. There is nothing dealing with financing at this point.
Okay, but that million dollar payment is not in this though, then?
No.
That's all, you know, second it.
Is there any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is item twenty-five, ordinance twenty-two-five dash two forty-three.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, ordinance twenty-two-five, two forty-three is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia's amended, specifically to amend Part One, Article Four, Civil Service System, to add department directors and department heads back into the civil service system, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations, to provide for severability, to provide an effective evidence ordinance, or for other purposes.
All right, all right, board members, is there any discussion at this time?
I do have a question.
All right, Commissioner Hambrich?
Is this the last reading?
No, so what happened, so as I mentioned before, when it was advertised, because it's a home rule, you have to advertise three times and adopt it twice at subsequent, at two regular, two regular meetings. The first time, when it was on the agenda and it was pulled, the advertisements that were run said that it was going to be voted at that first meeting. So when I looked at when the advertisements ran and the language in that versus what that first read, it would have created more problems than to have this be the second read, so we just re-advertised again to have, created a new number. So the effective date after this will be the next board meeting, that'll be your second read, and then it'll go into effect after that.
Oh, okay, like maybe the day after or something?
Yes.
So we have one more?
Yes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion for ordinance twenty-two-five dash two forty-three.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash two forty-three.
I second the motion, is there any more discussion at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, next, Attorney Reed, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, litigation and personnel?
All right, all right, board members, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel?
So moved.
All right, may I get a second?
Second.
In discussion at this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, we will now go into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. Thank you. Good evening, I need a motion for us to reconvene from executive session.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second? All right, is there any discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. All right, what's next, Mr. Reed? Why y'all all sitting in the back?
So, I think it's two, two items, both, there's two items.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. You just wanted to come on.
You don't have anything?
You don't have anything?
But there's two.
Okay.
But you don't have anything.
You don't have anything, oh, you good, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, you do.
I know, I know.
All right, Ms. Samuels?
Board of Commissioners, I want to say thank you for all that you all do. I know it's late and you all diligently work on our behalf, so I appreciate it. In accordance with Civil Service Rule five dot two hundred, and on behalf, well, let me start over, make sure the record is correct, in accordance with Civil Service Rule five dot two oh one, and on behalf of the Clerk of Superior Court, Human Resources is presenting for your consideration a request to hire Latoria Marzello as Deputy Court Clerk Supervisor at Grade Twenty-One, Step Fifteen, that's a salary of fifty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars. The entry compensation for this classification is Grade Twenty-One, Step Three, and the cost of this request is ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
All right, board members, is there any in the discussion? All right, at this time, you have any questions? Are you good? Okay, all right, at this time, any motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we hire for the clerk, right, and all, Ms. Marzello.
All right, I second the motion, any more, in discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right, next?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, in light of the board conducting recommendations from the panel regarding the building and maintenance positions, it is my understanding the board is really ready to move forward on, on the candidate of choice, so I yield the floor back to the board as to what candidate they would like to move forward with, with the building and maintenance director's position.
All right, board members, I need a motion on the candidate that we would like to move for, for on building and maintenance.
I would like to make a motion, I would like to make the motion to hire or for the building and maintenance director position, Mr. Mendoza, effective Saturday, November eighth.
Second. All right, any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Please give a round of applause and please.
Oh, no, no.
Mr. Mendoza, would you like to come and say something?
I'm here already, I don't want to take any, any more of your time, but I really appreciate this opportunity, and I am here to serve as always.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, congratulations.
Mr. Reed?
I have two settlement items, did you like to take together?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first, this settlement agreement between Maletis Cufre and D'Varia Young, Board of Commissioners, County. This is related to an auto accident that occurred on July seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and that is in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. And the second is a settlement agreement between Hanif Brown and Hazel Brown in Clayton County, and this is also related to a accident that occurred on, on Roberts Drive on October eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and there's also a civil action file number twenty-three, CV zero-two-six-three-nine, and that is in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and also authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect, reflect the appropriate revenue sources and expenses required by the terms of the agreements.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Let me just say it.
I move that we accept.
The following.
Your attorney's recommendation.
All right, and I second the motion, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question, for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, is that it for, we've got everything taken care of? All right, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, I second the motion, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. This meeting is adjourned as of nine twenty PM, have a great night.